Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and open up tonight's public hearing. This hearing has been called by the select board to provide information and allow public comment regarding the June 2025 annual town meeting warrant. Copies are available for tonight's public hearing. I think they're right at the doorway for anyone that doesn't have one or a like one. We're also joined tonight by Mike Richman from Custom Concepts Incorporated Architecture, and Andy Morrell from BH2M Civil Engineering to provide information about the town hall expansion project. Before we begin, I'd like to cover some general housekeeping items. This hearing is to hear questions and comments on the information presented. During the public hearing, members of the public will be called upon by the select board chair, ensuring that everyone who wishes to participate has an opportunity to do so. When called upon, please step to the podium, state your name and your town of residence. We ask that audience members be respectful and refrain from side conversations, and any individuals who are continuously disruptive may be asked to leave the hearing. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting, and the floor is now, actually, we'll just have you all start if you're ready. Does that work for you?
Perfect. Thank you. So, good evening. Mike Richman, Custom Concepts Architecture from Scarborough. I'm here with Andy Morrell, they're from Gorham. So, local guys, and very honored to have this assignment, so thank you all. Thank you. And please bear with us, we had some technical difficulties, as you could see. I have some drawings I'd like to share with you. Unfortunately, we actually have a 3D model, that's what I really wanted to show up here.
Okay.
And I'm happy, I know it's not professional, but I'm happy to go one by one with you if it helps. But this tells a lot more than the, than these drawings really do, gives the better picture. But I will be brief, so thank you for tonight. When we were hired to do this, one of our first jobs is always to assess the property, which we did alongside with Andy's assistance, and really realized that it made the most sense to go off the right-hand side, this side of the property, for a couple reasons. Number one, there's wetlands on the other side of the building, that would really restrict what you could do now and in the future. And secondly, the internal layout of the building right now is really set up where the public comes in and comes this way, and then the offices and the office wing, if you will, is that way. So just from a sort of a flow standpoint, this made a lot more sense. The design, you know, in a nutshell, really, we wanted to be as beautifully simple as the existing building is. It's very nice the way it is, we wanted to blend with the architecture, not overpower it. It was important to us and to the group that we've been discussing this with to create a separate entry for the addition, but really have it be secondary or subordinate to the main one, so it's still real obvious that the main entry is the main entry and should remain that way. We wanted to expand the current meeting room, this space that we're in now, and thought it would be a very useful space as the clerk's office. So the place where the desks are, we'll go over the plans in a moment. We also wanted to ensure that the building could be easily separated when needed, meaning both, both areas having separate facilities, you know, Boy Scouts, you know, one of those places could sort of take over one half and maybe not have access to the whole building, but they all have separate, separate spaces to use and facilities, meaning bathrooms. And a much larger meeting room than this currently exists, and I'll show you that in detail. Couple new offices, which we were able to accomplish. And one of the features that came up in a couple of the discussions, just so you know, although it's really not shown much, is the, we'd like to design this so that someday, if the day ever came where you really needed more space, we would design this foundation system for the addition, for, that it could withstand a second story. It's not much more expensive to do so, just so you know, one of the first things we discussed was putting a second story in this building, but the foundation is not adequate for it. So for little cost, we want to, we want to talk about the new addition, at least being able to expand vertically if you need to. And on that note, I'll show you in a moment, we have spots for a future elevator and a future stairway. So please bear with me here, this is not the way, I'm just going to, is it okay if I just approach?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you could speak out to our viewers at home, could hear you.
Understood. If you have questions, just please stop at any time. The existing building is this footprint right here, it goes up and goes across, so right now the space we are in is right in here. We would branch off this way into the parking lot, and you can see we would be mimicking the shape of the building. This is basically big rectangle with a bump on it, similar to this, big rectangle with a bump on it. The existing entrance that we all came into tonight is here, our new entrance would be tucked in there. So the idea is, you know, the regular daily function, people would come in just like they do today, this space could be converted to an office, this space may be a larger office, but still office space, and you would come straight through into this space, and this is where the much larger clerk's office is, where the various windows would be. So for the most part, a lot of this, well, it would be completely renovated, but the idea is to maintain, we can, just for financial reasons. We have, here's the hallway that you all know, currently ends here, we would expand it, couple more offices, pretty easy there, and not a lot of impact to the, to the property there. Was a discussion that we needed an actual vault, the one we have is good, but I've been told not really good enough for archives and town records. So as we've done in a couple of the town halls, that would actually be a, a true vault, you know, climate-controlled concrete walls and things like that, which we can get into. And then the addition is basically, pardon me, you come through this hall, very easy, through some glass doors, this is the place where you could close it off and say, we're going to have normal function, or we're going to close this off, and again, I use the Boy Scouts, there's many other groups, some group could, could rent this, lock these, lock this, and you don't have access to town hall. You come through here, very simple wide corridors, of course, men's and ladies rooms there, the kitchen, baby room, and this airlock sequence, not that we really need it for airlock for heat and cooling control, it's more for sound. So if there's something going on in there, and there's commotion out here, there's a place to trap that noise. For now, I know storage was brought up many, many times, that discussion took it down, storage space, storage space, but if the day ever came, we already did the math, this could become a stairway, up you go, this could become an elevator and an elevated machine room. So trying to think ahead that someday this could be our way to get upstairs if we need to. We did some preliminary math, and if that day ever came, and that was a second story, this, you know, this would need egress codes for that. So we're trying to set you up for, you know, for success there. This space here could be finished off many different ways with different things, this is just a hypothetical seating arrangement that we came up with, just to graphically show it's a meeting room. By definition, the code says this is 162 occupants, that's a lot of people, but that's, that's what the code says on a square foot basis. Door here, door here, not only for code, but for voting day. We discussed allowing the flow for voting day. This bump out here would really suffice for two things. Number one, one of these accordion-style walls, so that this big space is divisible, there's a lot of different walls and things we can figure out along the way, and some built-ins. Done a few of these town halls, and it can be very nice for, for you nice folks, just to have a place for stuff, you know, behind there. So that's, in terms of floor plan, that's where we are. The current building is about 3,600 square feet. This addition as drawn is about 5,600 square feet. So the total right now would be 9,215, give or take. The exterior, let me see if I can do this here. The exterior from the road is the top section there, and you can see on the left-hand side is the existing, and there's a light line drawn up the middle, that sort of depicts where that wall of windows is right behind you folks. And then on the right, of course, is the addition, and you can see that new entryway, some cute little sign over it. But again, we're trying not to compete with the main entry, but sort of mimic it at a smaller scale. And then we, I, I'm in dismay because we do have a 3D model, if you would like to see it, I'm happy to show anybody specifically, this, this shows it much better than, than that, so please leave me and tell me what you'd like me to do.
If people want to see it, I don't think it would hurt.
Mike, can you first stand here and show the board, and then just turn around and show the audience, please?
Yeah.
So, it's the existing part. Thank you. So, of course, the side on the left, that's the existing, there's the current entry. We do not have to put a coupler on the building, it's a very municipal thing to do, so of course we do it by default. It's, it can be a nice head. There's the new entry there.
And another exit for the vehicles farther on down?
Wait, yes. And it will show you the whole, the whole site.
Love the idea of another entry-exit. It's kind of scary some days, voting days.
Into that, I'll turn this over to Andy.
My turn to the site by the way. So Mike did a heck of a job running down the building, I just want to go over some of the site improvements. There you go. Thank you. So some of the other site improvements, so the lighter portion of the building is the existing building, the darker hatched portion of the building is the addition that Mike just went over. You can see the walkways around the building, providing access to all those doors that Mike was just talking about. We're also proposing a five-foot gravel path over to the abutting parcel there, that's to provide some connectivity to the abutting parking lot, so that there could be some parking sharing during kind of large, larger events. We've also added a drop-off zone at the beginning of the building, so you come in, so that main entrance is basically the, the entrance that we all came in tonight. You're going to come in, and there's kind of a drop-off area in front of the building where somebody could pull in, drop somebody off, we're voting, then go park. That's going to involve the relocation of the septic system that's under the front of the parking lot there, we're hoping to push it into the back somewhere. So the parking lot right now is a 38-space parking lot, plus or minus. We're eating up obviously a lot of the parking where the building is being expanded, so we're expanding the parking to the west. The way I've got it shown on this plan here in front of you has 44 parking spaces with two ADA parking spaces. One entrance roughly where the existing entrance is, and then adding another entrance to the west, down there, providing kind of two accesses out to South Waterboro Road. We've also added a dumpster kind of down in that, in that corner. Location of that dumpster is still kind of up in the air, but we've, we've got it on the plan down there for, for now. What we're also trying to do is plan for events where maybe this parking lot isn't enough, and maybe the joint parking lot next door isn't enough. So we're providing access kind of across this wetland here to get to a grass overflow parking area. I've shown roughly 16 cars on there, I think in reality we could probably fit a lot more than that, but you've got a grass area over there that could be used for temporary events where this parking lot and the next-door parking lot aren't quite big enough. What we tried to provide as well as this overflow parking lot is a connection to the rest of the parcel. As the board knows, there's a, there's a, you know, quite a bit of activity on this parcel on the northern portion of the site, so we wanted to create a pedestrian path that would connect the town hall with the other portion of the site. So we're going to create a walking path across these kind of two legs of the wetland here to get over to that portion of the site. We've also proposed a sidewalk kind of along our entire parking area that'll cross over to the overflow parking lot, so somebody could come out of the town hall and, in theory, walk all the way over to those, to those ball fields. I think the other item that we've talked about is eventually creating a kind of walkable loop where this new pathway that we're creating could tie into the existing path that comes off the end of the parking lot over here. We could have kind of a walkable loop around the entire site, and that would be a really good feature. So that's kind of a summary of what we're proposing outside of the building. I will happily throw it back to you guys for any questions you guys have.
Andy, are you proposing that there's an in, an entrance and an exit, or are they split?
Right, right now I've got them two-way traffic on both, but we certainly could accommodate those to go whatever way makes the most sense.
That being a state road, would DEP have a problem with those two that close?
I don't believe so, no.
DOT?
Do what they say.
DEP. Just want to clarify.
I don't believe so, we're talking about this, this number of parking and this kind of use for a facility, I, I think that's something we can get, we can get promoted. But we certainly could accommodate one-way traffic if, you know, if we wanted to have one way in and then one way out. In some ways, that makes quite a bit of sense, in some ways, I think it makes sense to have...
As much sense as people using it, right?
Yes, right. If you make it one way, is it always used that way? No, not always. If we did go one way, we could certainly angle the parking, which would allow us to kind of reduce the footprint of the parking lot, potentially, if we had an angled parking lot, but that would really tie you into it forever being one way.
So where the existing septic is now that would be removed, are those parking spots?
Yes.
That you're proposing there?
Yes.
Is two handicap parking spots, like, is that the standard for this amount of parking spaces, or?
Yeah, you're required to have one for 25 parking spaces, so we're required to have two for this facility. We certainly could put more.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like a lot to me. I think of, like, seeing the number, you know, of older residents, so...
Yep, I think we could certainly bump that number up if, if that's what you guys would like to do.
Andy?
Yes?
The two entrances and exits?
Yes.
Would we be able to design those so that when we have a big election, we can make one an in and one an out, but not necessarily for every day?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, some temporary signage could be used, on those big events, that would make it clear to anybody coming down the road that this is the entrance and this is the exit. And I think what you did that once, and people got the idea of it, I think they hopefully kind of understand moving forward, that's the approach. But yes, that's certainly an option.
Any other questions? Great, thank you guys. What we'll do is we'll jump into the public hearing, and as part of the public hearing, people might have questions, and we'll kind of look to you to help us out if you have the answers. So that, we'll jump into just the public comment part of the public hearing, if anybody has anything on the warrant or what we just saw, you're welcome to come up and ask our speaker. Yeah, 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 on any, on any, on the warrant or on anything that was just presented. Can you come to the podium now so that we can, sorry?
I'm being single. No, I was just looking at the, where the handicap parking spaces is, are, and where we're going to have all the voting, and how far away that's going to be if they're exiting off to the, on the east side of that building, along the path, it just seems kind of fun. You know, if you're in a wheelchair or using a walker, what if there's another way to kind of fix that a little bit? That was my only question. Thank you.
Thanks, Irene. Any other questions or comments about the warrant or presentation? Yeah, you can just stay up if you want, that's fine too.
I know at a previous meeting, Steve Lord was here.
Yep.
And he said that there was something mentioned about a possible area for our Historical Society, and so just trying to kind of figure out where that little area was. You know, it's supposed to be kind of an interior room without windows.
Yeah, it's in there, Irene.
It's in there somewhere.
But it's subject to change.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, once, once all the department heads, they're going to have their input. Obviously, the residents will have their input, but there is going to be a spot for them.
Okay, perfect.
So, you see where the vestibule is, Irene? On the, on the detailed inside?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, the possible stairwell and...
Elevator.
Elevator. In that elevator space.
Okay.
That's tentative.
I think that would be awesome to have all that stuff in a place like that.
Yeah, I would think that some of the displays that we've been presented with from the Historical Society could be placed in the new meeting room.
Yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't that be fabulous? Just to have a home for it all would be like...
Like not your house.
It was also discussed the second vault, to potentially store some of the more valuable things that need to be conditioned, in conditioned space.
I know that you guys have worked on these plans and been talking about this for, for how long now?
Couple years.
Couple years. I just want to thank you all for doing this. It's, it's really nice to be able to see, I can imagine things fairly well, not everybody can, so to be able to just see it laid out like this is, and I appreciate your time, effort.
So, gentlemen, you worked on the Hollis?
We did.
They kind of provided a model in terms of financing. I believe they received a substantial grant from the USDA. Now, I don't know if we'd be, things being the way they are, that would still be an avenue for us, but some time ago I mentioned the May Municipal Bond Bank as a possible source of funding for this project, so...
Any other public comment, either on this or anything on the warrant, while we're still in public hearing?
I'm hearing any.
Okay. I'm not going to drag it out any longer, so hearing no further comment, no further public comment, this is going to conclude the public hearing. We're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to open into our regular select board meeting, so... Yep, so, yeah, so I was just going to say, if you all, you all are more than welcome to stay for the select board meeting, but you're also more than welcome to pack up and get to wherever you need to be.
Thank you very much.
So that will just take a break for a second, so they can disconnect and we can reconnect. My stuff is not in my pocket. This stuff was all like, like always.
Flipping the page, it only has to last another year.
If you need one, there you go.
Perfect.
Okay. I am.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and open into our regular select board meeting now. Welcome to the May 19th, 2025 regular meeting of the Lyman Select Board. This meeting is a public proceeding and is being recorded. Everyone could join me to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, with that, we'll jump into public input just for this select board meeting. Public in attendance will have up to five minutes to address the board. Again, please use the podium to address the board and please be respectful of others. The board may not be able to respond to question and answer during public comment, so if you wish to be placed on a future agenda, we'll just have you contact the town manager, but we'll say that if we feel that's kind of the case. So with that, we'll open to any public comment for the regular select board meeting. Okay. And then we will.
Madam Chair, may I make a quick public service announcement?
Sure. Oh, you have a microphone, that's fine.
Right. Just to let folks know, there's a blood drive this Saturday at the fire station from 9:00 AM to 1:30.
Awesome. All right. Great. Okay, so we'll move on. Also in our packet, we have, for mail, item B, we have the York County Sheriff Report, which is detailed, that's in the packet online as well. Again, those always interest me, so. We'll jump into our unfinished business. I don't believe we have any updates on the franchise agreement at this point in time.
You did not?
Yeah, I don't think so, but I have to say it out loud just to make sure. Would have been great to get that done. Cemetery Committee, we had a request last time for it to remove some trees. I know we talked about the funds that they had left for this fiscal year versus the funds that are on the warrant to be allocated for next fiscal year should they be approved. And then it looks like we have an email now that just says the, they're able to get those, that work done at a discounted rate, so I'm not sure, I can't recall. Jeanette, maybe you're the person to ask this, if that falls in what they have remaining for this current fiscal year?
So, they have, there was money donated from Charlie Harrison Fund for $1,050. Other donations in amount of $125. Their balance in their budget for FY '25 is $2487, which leads to a total of $3,662. And next year, their tree budget is $12,000.
So they have the budget for this fiscal year to accomplish this. I think that there was question about whether there was a veteran in that cemetery and it sounds like there is a veteran in it. So.
That's the thing about those though, the big trees can wreck all the stones.
So I did get some pictures to share with you guys.
You may look first, Joe. Oh yeah, that one's in Russian. Yikes.
It's like the people that was on our.
Looks painful. I'm glad we got that, the question about the veteran in there. Got that answered, got the money. Definitely looks like the trees are beyond their prime for sure.
So I guess there was some question about private versus ancient versus that you guys had at your last meeting.
Because, because of the veteran angle, that having a veteran in it, we are responsible to take care of veterans' graves, according to the statute. And so if, if it was private and there was none, then that would have been an issue.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up with, with the questions that you had had with the last meeting.
Other thoughts on that? Is anybody good with the information that we got back?
Will the, will the stumps be ground? Will everything be chipped and taken off site? Anybody know?
I don't think we know that.
I know they usually leave, you know, they usually say they leave the wood there for somebody to, to take, so.
The last time we spent $20,000, we left wood in us.
Could there be approval with the stipulation that?
They don't, they don't usually grind the stumps.
I'm not as worried about the stumps as I am about like just huge pieces of tree and branches and stuff. That's me personally, so. I'm okay with doing that as far as including a stipulation that they get picked up, but I guess I'll just say one last time, if they get approved for money, even funding next year, I would hope that there could be a scope developed and that the whole thing can be bid out as one package as far as it's all of these trees.
Yep.
And getting three prices and getting one purchase order and doing this all one time instead of like 10 small times.
Brush chipped, wood cleaned up, the whole school.
Yeah. That's just my own personal.
No, I don't disagree with you, just.
Otherwise, I'm okay with them using budgeted funds that they have with that stipulation.
We are okay with that.
If someone wants to make a motion.
I would move that of the $3,662 that are available to the cemetery committee that are $3,500, be used for the removal of the trees at the Harrison Cemetery where a veteran is interred, with the stipulation that all debris would be removed.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion about it? All in favor? Was that everybody?
I think so.
All right, I gotta get used to looking all the way down. Not waiting for the box to dock back to me.
I gotta pull my head back.
Or I can just pay closer attention, that's fine.
Welcome home Dave.
We're like, aw darn. Okay, excellent. All right, and we will move along to, last time I think we had reviewed the planning board's bylaws and mission statement. We sent the changes to the planning board. And then, I think that's where it's stayed. Is that true?
We have no responses yet.
Okay. So, and it looks like Lindsey sent this on the knife, I don't know if they've met since we are here now. They did, okay. Cause it says the item will be on the, on the next select board agenda for further review slash approval. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
Table until we get some feedback?
I think it's safe to table till next time, I don't want to let it just drag until.
I thought I saw something on an email. I thought I saw something on an email chain about it, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm dreaming.
Do they meet again this Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm probably able to, that's one till next time if everyone else is good with that approach.
At that time will we?
I think at that time we have to say, okay.
Cause I mean, I'm down with the changes and, and like the wording that was procured for the change that we wanted to make.
Make it seem more friendly.
Agreed.
Do we need a, a motion to table?
I don't think we do. All right. And then CEO fee schedule updates, changes from the last approved fee schedule. It looks like the highlighted item is the zoning board of appeals.
And then we just do this?
Somehow when it was presented to you at the last meeting, the zoning board of appeals fee went from $350 to $250, clerical error, so this is to fix that issue.
Okay, so it's going, it's staying what it was?
Staying what it was, yes.
Okay.
It's 10, almost $10 now to send a certified mail.
Oh yeah, no doubt. I don't know if anyone has a motion for that.
Oh, and make a motion, we accept this. Today's fee scale as written.
A second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are going to move into department and committee reports. I know in our packets we have the fire chief's all hands, for anyone that's interested in looking at that. And then, Vicky, I think you have one thing.
I did, I do have something I would like to update. Last meeting, I said that our chief was resigning, which he is, but he's still in place, in that we were going to, I said, interview someone that was internal, and I misspoke and it was not an interview. It was a conversation. We posted the job, we got some responses that was, that closed the last night, and we are starting a formal interview process this coming Thursday. Real interview, not a conversation. Okay, that's clarification.
Appreciate that.
I didn't want to confuse anybody. Didn't mean to.
Appreciate it. Also in the packets, the treasurer's expense report, again, that's all online as well. Moving into new business, item A is Parks and Rec, there's a question about five minute ramps and temporary permitting.
Holly had requested to speak with you in, about changing it from permanent to temporary. I.
We don't, yeah, there's no.
Okay, well, there's no information in the packet, there's nobody here to speak to it, so we're.
We did discuss this briefly a couple of meetings ago, where when speaking with DEP, they wanted, they wanted a long laundry list, which was going to push us past, I think, the August date before it got done. So at that point, I don't know if anybody remembers, but I mentioned that we're probably better off going with the temporary for now. If we have the appetite for it, we can go for permanent later, but at least let's get the ramps where they gotta go and make that happen.
So we'd have to, we'd have to vote it because we voted to do permanent.
Now we can vote to make it temporary.
A couple of things on that. So, the planning board approved it for permanent. They would also have to go back to the planning board for temporary.
Do they?
Because they approved it for permanent.
Yeah.
I talked to Becca this morning and she believed that to be true. It's just a matter of going back and they can say, because they did a notice of decision. So they would have to change their notice of decision.
But I thought, didn't, if we went, and maybe I'm mixing things up, perhaps we've talked about this so many times, if they went temporary, didn't they not have to go to the planning board originally?
That's what I thought.
Just the CEO, right?
Correct.
That might be. Maybe they need to go back to the planning board to have them rescind their notice of decision, which would make sense. Does that?
My thought is to keep the decision in, if we have the appetite for it, we already have pot one done.
Right.
That, that's my thought.
Makes some sense.
Irene, the other thing real quick, could you make a vote with, on saying something along the lines that we'll get something here to know who's going to be responsible for putting it, putting it out, what the plan is, what the, the committee wants for the plan?
Before the, the, you mean who's going to take it?
Yeah, who's going to be responsible for that? When are they going to do it? So if they're not out, we know who to call and say, why haven't you done this?
So I haven't, I haven't read the new position, scope of.
Which isn't approved yet because we don't have the funding yet. We're not going to go down that rabbit hole tonight, please.
I mean, that's a possibility, but in the meantime.
Wasn't ready for you to come back.
I know Lindsey asked and she hasn't received anything from the committee. So if you approve it, then could we, would it be possible to add that in there?
Can we pause for a second? If we, so we meet again the first week of June?
Second.
Yeah, second, second. Yeah, so whatever that first Monday is, right? So I don't think that's going to put us at a point where we'd be like, oh, missed the vote, can't figure that out now.
It's June 2nd.
So are we okay with tabling this until, until next time, until we have like more, like all the information figured, like, and we have, I don't know, you tell me, you're more involved.
Well, the, the only thing is that, you know, it puts another two weeks on them getting the, the permit for temporary. I, I think, I think we approve it pending, you know, finding somebody to tag that responsibility too.
Okay, is that a motion that you just made?
That was a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I think before, I'm, I, I'm with Jeanette, I want to see the plan, I want to see what the date that they're going in, I want to see where they're going to be stored after they come out.
Know where they're going to be stored?
No, I don't, because we don't have anything.
Right on top of the platform.
Yep.
You're going to pull it up and you're going to put it right on the platform.
Yep. So I think the way.
Somebody writing that down.
Literally lifting it up and dragging it right on.
Who, who's responsible for it? I know when Parks and Rec were here before, they said that they were going to do that, putting them in and taking them out, but I think that we need that, we need that commitment from that committee, I think, because I think we're going to find out that three docs having to go in in a certain time, having to come out at a certain time, with everybody's busy life, I think that that's going to be something that, no, we might not be able to do that. And then we're going to have to find who can do it.
Well, and I think, again, I didn't want to go down this rabbit hole, but pending a potential position, I think that's something that could be assigned, but to that point, we don't have that yet, so we need, we need a plan in place now on the chance that that does not happen.
Correct.
So I think so long as, I, I would say the specification being that the town manager needs to be okay with the plan, right, that.
Well, I think if she's already asked, they need to give her the plan. If she's already asked the committee, then that's something that the committee needs to give to her.
I think this motion, I think this motion makes it like the board is asking for this, the town manager's asked for it, the board is now asking for it, and we're not proceeding without it.
Do we also know, because wasn't there talk at the last meeting about one of the ramps had to be moved?
Well, I'm questioning, if you, if you have a ramp that's ADA basically, why can't you walk a canoe or right down the ramp? Why are you dragging it? Why are you dragging it into the water?
I don't know, but this was what was discussed and it was brought up that they were going to reach out to Kevin to overlay like what he did with the other one. I just, are we making a motion that, you know, we're, we're talking about this, what if there isn't a third location that it, that one could go in temporarily?
What we're talking about though, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We're talking about permanent to temporary. We're not really talking about anything else. It either stays in or it comes out, and that's what the motion is. The rest of it, I think, can be figured out.
And we're just talking the ramp, we're just talking the ramp that goes in the water. So it's, you pull the pins, you drag it up, you leave it on, on shore, you're done.
The platform stays.
A 10 minute ordeal, and if it makes this easier and less painful, I'll volunteer.
No. No. I won't.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Not saying you won't. Welcome back. We're gonna ask the committee for the plan.
If you take one side, Dave, I'll take the other.
Maybe that will be the committee's plan. I don't know. Jeanette, what do you got?
I was just reading through some notes that Lindsay left me. And she said, um, the CEO said they need a PBR for the platform, regardless if it's temporary or permanent. I just wanted to remind you of that.
But the process.
And that's the process that we're holding up.
That's, I did one of those last, last week.
Okay, so we're not holding it up with this motion? Any other discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that?
I think I did.
Yes.
Okay.
Joe did.
All right. Moving along. Review and approve, or review slash approve employee personnel policy. I am happy to have discussion. I personally am not prepared to, I just, I have questions, because I think these are Lindsay's updates, and I'm sure that I'll be, but I just wanna be able to ask her questions on a couple clarifying things, because my HR brain got a little stuck, so.
I know that when we approved this originally, we did it, we had a workshop on it, went over it page by page and discussed it, and I, I don't know if any, does anybody else think that that would be a night, a good idea to do again? Or, or is, are people cool with it? I'd like to hear what other people have to say, I mean.
I think it's good pending questions from Jessica.
I, I just, there are more clarifying questions than anything. I don't have any, like, severe reservations about any of it. I do want to be clear about that. I'm not like, oh my gosh, absolutely not. I just want to make sure that I fully understand before I sign my name on it.
Is there something I can clarify for you at this point, or?
Um, I don't think so.
I do have a schedule here in anticipation that you wanted to do a workshop.
Well, I didn't, I don't really want to do a workshop. Here's the deal, I, I, I think that, I, I just have a couple clarifying questions. And I think once I ask Lindsay those, I'll be fine. Like, here, here's an example, like, Jeanette, one of the things is about, so we're getting into that paid family, right? It's a blast.
Isn't it fun?
It's a, it's a great benefit, but it's really a blast on the HR side of life. So when we talk about family, to care for a family member with serious health conditions, like, are we defining family member?
It's defined by the state.
But is it defined, I guess, I, I just want to be clear in here that, like, that's, it all defers back to those definitions, that's.
So you want her to put something in there as per MRSA, blah, 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 blah.
It might already be in there, I just.
Because they might change that.
When I see to care for a family member, right? I, I've lived this, right?
Yeah, I know, I get you.
It's my third cousin's brother, it's my family.
I know, I, I.
And then you get somebody who's out for 12 weeks, and then they come back. I'm not saying we have that here necessarily either, but. I think she does kind of say it, for more details, information can be found at, and it, it references where to go. State and main laws, and she'll supersede this policy, so.
Yeah, I don't know what you guys are doing, but as far as pay, PFML. Yeah. We don't administer it. They have to apply to the state. Or they have to apply to an outside insurance agency that we have hired to do that. They'll determine whether that person meets the family criteria. So do you want us just to put something in there that says?
I just, here's.
I mean, that's one that.
I just have more questions that I think I can ask offline and get the answers. Like, here's, here's another example, right? So the other thing is, is that you don't actually have to do this paid family leave if you have a, a product that covers the same or better, right?
We don't, yeah.
And so have we looked, is the other question, right? And I'm not saying there is, I'm just saying, I just want to do due diligence there, because it's.
Yeah, no, I got you. It is a beast.
Other towns just automatically going with.
I mean, there were like 12 emails today on PFML. Just today.
I'm bargaining it right now, it's a.
Yeah, I know.
Anyway, I don't want to bore everybody with all of my nonsense.
So you're gonna reach out to Lindsay and?
If everybody's okay with that.
Table for now?
Yes, please. If everyone else is ready, I mean. I don't want to hold up progress.
Need a motion to do that?
So.
We didn't motion the other thing to table.
Yeah, that's true.
Let's not.
Okay. There you go.
We're good. Sorry.
I don't know.
All right, next, select board code of conduct.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Similar to the, the previous suggestions for changing to the personnel policy, there is a lot here, I think, for us to go over, and we just have had this for a weekend. Maybe possibly a tabling this. A couple of things that I noticed on page two. Election of Chair and Vice Chair. I think there's a little bit of an inconsistency there in terms of dates. Board members during the first regular meeting following the annual town meeting, which would be our second meeting in June. And later in that paragraph, it refers to the actual election in the first meeting in July. So I think there's a little bit of a discrepancy there.
That may be because of the charter language.
The way I read it was, the onboarding and the discussion of the, the two workshops previous. And then the, the first meeting, when the new board seat sits, the first meeting in July, that's when you vote on Chair and Vice Chair. I found something, there was, when I read it today, there was a, I thought it, I thought it conflicted with the charter about the agenda, which is what I would, wanted to look at, but I'm not to change the subject.
So, and, and I think I remember this. I think you guys had said, okay, our second meeting in June is going to be X, and you're going to have a workshop. And I can't quite wrap my brain around which came first, the chicken or the egg.
It, it says, in her new language here on page two, it says, each year, the fourth Monday following the annual town meeting will be reserved for a select board workshop dedicated to new member onboarding and discussion of the Chair and Vice Chair positions.
Is that the fourth Monday in June?
Yes.
Because, or the fourth Monday after the town meeting? You know what I mean?
It's wonky.
I think it's easy, if everyone wants to do a workshop, we'll do another workshop.
Or we can just call it.
Could be your last workshop.
We can try to clean that up a little bit and see if it works.
I think it's, I think that's an easy fix. I just think it's also an easy confusion, if you're not, if you don't.
Because, well, this isn't even a change that was, that's being proposed. We're talking about, but under agendas, it says we'll be prepared by the town manager and approved by the Chair or Vice Chair before being posted. And then in the charter, it says, I'm gonna find my paper quick. The Chair or Vice Chair shall set the agenda for the board's meeting. And so I feel like that's a little bit of a confliction that I noticed. Maybe not, I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be.
Wordplay thing, right?
Nitpicky, I just noticed it. And I'm usually, I'm not the one that notices.
Why are you looking to that side of the table?
Well, you don't.
Well, I think they're currently being prepared, following this, you know, by the town manager, and then she sends it out to the Chair and the Vice Chair for.
I think it's just a matter of the word approved instead.
Yeah.
Right, set is approval.
I don't know, it just seemed like we should.
Be consistent.
The, the charter is, I don't know, to me, it just seems different.
Yeah.
She wanted to bring it up, don't really.
Again, I'm, I'm, I'm on board to workshop.
Yeah.
Any slash all of these, if that's easier, so. Does anyone want to do that? Jeanette printed us a calendar.
Oh, no, Lindsay did that for me, because she's awesome.
She knows this too well.
She does.
All right, hold on, I gotta ring up like three other schedules. Just bear with me, friends. I'm so sorry, I don't even know what the date is, so. Oh, because that's me, sorry.
It's only like Thursday, the 22nd this month.
That's, that's Lindsay's first day.
That will not work for me.
How about June 3rd, June 5th? June 9th?
That's the night before town, you know, that's the night before the election.
Before the, not the, not the town meeting, but the, yeah.
The, the election, that whole week, though, was pretty tight.
So the 3rd or the 5th?
I have Fire Commission on the 5th.
I work on the 3rd.
Okay.
Now, is this something?
I can do the 9th, just saying.
That could be rolled into the workshop that we already have, scheduled on the 23rd? I mean, I know it's onboarding, but how, how long will that take?
I'm, I'm gone, I'm, we're just totally.
I'm thinking the night they'll want to set this room up. So she should have put that down there. I don't think they're having it at the school.
No, not voting.
Yeah, so then, on the night, they'll want to be setting this room up, so skip that. How about the 11th?
I work the 11th.
17th?
I mean, there's four other, if the 11th works for everybody else. Yeah, Tuesday and Wednesdays are out for me, because I work till eight, so. But if those are days that work for the other four, then.
Or Thursday, the 5th? Oh, yeah, she has GMR, that's right.
Well, do you?
I could probably, well, I don't know, I can't really say right now, because of what we're doing, so. I, I don't want to cut that short, I was gonna say I could probably come by 6:30 or something, but I don't.
Amber, to your, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Amber, to your point about maybe adding it to the, the 23rd, the general topic is consonant with what we are covering that night, in terms of expectations of, of a select board performance commitments to, to certain principles.
So you're saying we couldn't add anything?
I said we could.
Oh, okay.
That's what I heard.
Might be appropriate, too.
I mean.
I'm still gonna ask my questions to Lindsay, just so she has them.
Yeah, I know, it works.
Does that thought process work for everyone else?
I don't have a thought process.
Sorry, is that?
It's over here.
Does that work for everyone else? Does the 23rd, adding these two things to the 23rd workshop, work for everyone else?
I don't want to, but I'm not, not gonna die on a hill either.
Dave, what do you think?
Well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Fresh out of the box, this is great.
Just as it would be appropriate to ask town council to take a look at the, the language here as well, so that we as not, you know, legal authorities, might miss something that the town attorney might catch as something that we may need to adjust the language to.
Are we referring to the code of conduct?
Yes.
My first little brushback on that is, do we really feel the need for legality on a, on a code of conduct that we're holding ourselves to? We just need to agree to hold that conduct without, you know, worried about suing each other, I guess.
There's only really one thing on this code of conduct that concerns me at all with the changes, and that is the, one of the bullet points.
But I think that's something, too, that could be discussed at the workshop, that if the board at the time feels that this is something that should be reviewed by legal, that it should be more in its, what would be the final state, instead of.
Great.
Instead of like, hey, look at this this time, oh wait, now we had a workshop and we changed it.
Okay.
To look at it again, that would be my own thought about it.
Yeah, you're right, that makes sense.
So, what would be a nice position for the board is to have somebody in charge of whatever legal question goes forth and it comes back as a answer, that a, a board member actually collates and forms a book, frequently asked questions, things of that. Because it seems like we constantly go back to it.
I think.
And a lot of times, we'll, we'll ask sort of the same question, you know? And, and it's not, it's not anybody's fault.
I think it's gotten way better.
Oh, way better, way better.
And I think Lindsay has some of that, probably, if I had to guess. That would be at least the start of it, if not, an existing version.
That's why it would make me feel better if, if she was concerned about it, doing it every day, than, you know, us kind of bringing it up, if it's not necessary. I, I just, I hate to see those costs escalate.
Okay, just so I have my notes correct. You're gonna, huh?
23rd.
You're gonna add those two to the 23rd. And you'll send some questions. If anybody else has questions, send them to Lindsay and maybe can get that covered beforehand. That'd be great.
All right. So we will jump to item D. The Historical Society has submitted a request for an expendable funds account. So this is similar to like the other groups that we've enabled to set up an account so that they can fundraise and have funds available to. This seems like a really good one. I'll just read just the little blurb about it. So the Lyman Historical Society has in previous years raised funds at the annual Memorial Day Parade. For the Travis Mills Foundation, this year, our society voted to raise funds for our local veterans instead. So they're requesting that the Town and Lyman Select Board establish an expendable fundraiser account dedicated to supporting the needs of our town's local veterans who may be facing hardships, including but not limited to emergency home repairs, heating, fuel, mobility, or accessibility needs, temporary food or shelter support. The account will be funded through donations and community fundraisers, and disbursements will be made on a case-by-case basis as determined by the select board or their designee. So they're hopeful to kind of build their program.
Does an account like that need to have a minimum balance?
No. What I do is, they get put in with all, all of the other accounts, the reserve accounts. Yeah, and then what I do is, for interest, I do a weighted average for every month down based on the dollar amounts.
So this is not a hardship to add to the treasurer's, another account.
I mean, I really like you. No, it, it's just another.
But it has to be motion?
Yes. Thank you, though.
Well, I make a motion that we establish an expendable fundraiser account for the Historical Society to be used for veterans.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, as a member of the society, I'll recuse myself in this vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, what's it say?
Yeah, thank you.
I fell asleep, who's motion?
Vicki.
Vicki motioned, and.
Dave's second.
Thank you.
Fell asleep? Wow.
What just happened?
Okay, thank you.
I just woke up long enough to make the motion, that's all.
I'm like, where was I a minute ago?
You were great, all right, well, we're gonna keep moving. Uh, we're gonna move on, uh, there was a request for a discussion regarding committees recording and streaming meetings and proceedings.
Yes, Amber, if you want. So I asked for this to be put on, um, and I would like to request that the select board require all committees to be able to have their videos on YouTube.
Don't they all?
No, we have the cemetery committee, we have the Parks and Rec, we have, um, IT committee, um.
Probably building grounds.
Building and grounds, we have a giving committee, but they, I don't think they've met yet. So, and the reason why I ask this is because on Wednesday evening, there was a Parks and Rec meeting at the library. Normally, there's, you know, there's not really any thing, I mean, not big stuff going on. So anyway, being at the library, there was a gentleman that came in and he said he was being, you know, he was there for the Parks and Rec meeting. And so he introduced himself as somebody from the YMCA. And so I just thought, oh, that's weird, I've never heard of the YMCA going to a Parks and Rec meeting before. And because I was working, I couldn't go and sit and attend the meeting. And I just think that, that they should be on, on YouTube so that other people, we, there is no agenda for Parks and Rec, you can't look online, you know, you can't go to the town website and see an agenda for any of these committees, there's not one for Parks and Rec, there's not ones for cemetery, there's not one for IT, buildings, grounds. So people don't know what they're talking about at their meetings, and might not know what is being offered. So I, I think that we're at the point where we need to have our committees be meeting and so that they can be on YouTube.
So you're looking for consistency?
Yes, yeah.
How did we put that, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but we have the committee handbook, is that addressed in there? Some, as far as, I mean, I think it's probably addressed as far as if you're having a public meeting, you have to advertise the public meeting, and it has to be like.
And their meetings are, and their meetings are, well, at least Parks and Rec, I can't speak to the other one, I know Parks and Rec's meetings are always noticed, we all get the emails and everything, but there's no agenda. If anybody else in the town would have been interested in the YMCA being at that Parks and Rec meeting, but didn't know about it, you know, I, I just think it's important that.
Well, so it could be a couple of things, right? It's like, he could just be somebody that's like, oh yeah, I work for the YMCA, and he was just there for Parks and Rec. Or he could be somehow acting on behalf of YMCA, which would be a little more concerning.
Which is what was.
We're kind of going back and forth on.
Which is what, yes. The, he was not there to attend the meeting as a public citizen. He was there to address Parks and Rec as a member from the YMCA.
There was an email sent, Tom.
I'm, yeah, yes. I, that, I just bring that up as a hyper, like, it could have been one of two things, whereas to your point, if there's an agenda, if it's tel- televised, uh, broadcasted, recorded, then it's out there.
Yes.
And there's no weird feeling or need for an email.
Yes.
Maybe there'd be a need for an email, I don't know. Why are you laughing down there? Did you miss me that much, Dave? I, I'm fine, I, I'm fine with that, I would just, uh, recommend that we build it into, I know we just got done with the committee handbook, but I think it's something that should be part of the committee handbook. Wherever we land on it.
I agree.
May well be in there, and I quite agree with you, Amber, uh, all of the, uh, committees should be recorded and, uh, broadcast on YouTube.
It can be a motion, I can make that motion.
At least audio recorded.
At least.
Yeah, okay, I make a motion that, um, all committees, um, need to have their meetings noticed, properly noticed, and, um, recorded for YouTube. I'm leaving something out, that's not a good motion. And agendas, yes, agendas.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So when do we have the workshop to change the?
Start it.
We probably should include that on the 23rd.
It may be in there already.
There's no time, there's no time.
It may be in there already.
Well, there's Friday, the 6th is open. Friday, June, Friday, June 6th is open. I wasn't gonna say it.
Changes everything.
Doesn't it? I'll bring pizza.
It's like my one regret for my forever.
She said it's unavailable, see, the 6th, the Friday, yep.
Oh, I was looking, I was looking at my own calendar.
She wrote unavailable on all those Fridays, because she knew, I was gonna be like, I can do Friday.
Okay.
Um, all right, now we need to move on to our, our fun stuff. Uh, we're gonna review and approve meeting minutes from May 5th, 2025.
Make a motion till approved is written.
Second.
Wow, any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Uh, we have payroll warrant number 50, and the amount of $31,944.32.
So moved.
Second.
My goodness, any discussion?
We're on the downside.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, accounts payroll warrant number 51 for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $311,307.86.
So, okay, seconded.
Any discussion on that one?
I do want to say, for EcoMaine, our municipal solid waste was, um, $11,140.76, and our recycling was $737.10. And Jeanette, do you remember off the top of your head, is it $97.50 that we're paying right now?
I think it's, oh, for the tipping, yeah, that sounds right, but don't quote me on it.
Going up to like 107.50?
Yeah, I was just gonna say 107.
And then recycling right now is 65?
That sounds right, that's going up.
Eighty-five, fifty, I think. So, I was, I couldn't remember what those were, um, because I wanted to figure out how many tons each of those were, if it was comparable, like, um, recycling tonnage.
Anytime you want that report, just let me know, I keep it every time the bill comes in with the tonnage and, and all that information on it.
Okay.
I put my head down, I looked up, everyone's gone.
Hey, yeah, yeah, sorry, I don't know.
Wow. All right.
The important people are left, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Just a quick one, I, I noticed that we, uh, have dispersment to RCS, has the, uh, work on the cost tables begun yet?
No, so we, we've gotten it started, I, they have access, I gave them access to Trio. I spoke to Brendan the other day to give them online access to Trio, um, so we're getting it started and up and running. And that was per the contract that we're issuing that out.
And my apologies, I hope you don't mind, just an additional question, with the dispersment to Dayton Sand and Gravel, Jeanette, do you know if that was the work on Walker Road and Poor Farm Road?
Um, I can, I can grab the, the warrant, there was, there was two or three roads, and I, I know we just got another bill, I think Fry's Bridge, um, so yeah, he's getting a lot of work done.
Okay, just.
I'll be happy, you want me to go grab that for you?
Not at that present, uh, maybe, uh.
Maybe while you're signing?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Where am I?
Everybody remember, it was pronounced.
Oh, yeah.
Outside here, outside here.
No.
No, no, in the bucket behind me.
You have choices.
Thank you. Well, I can retrieve myself on this one, so.
Okay. Glad you caught it.
Erosion control mix, and that's just a bucket, so it stops.
How many? It's just pages.
That's less than.
Okay, still doing that.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, the $76,000 is for Walker Road and Fry's Bridge, and the 102 is for Poor Farms.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You forget how to do that? I'll help you.
We're just waiting for our turn, we're being efficient.
Without one?
Still, Joe was still using it.
Oh, okay.
Doug's still doing it. I'm gonna throw this away. They ask you, what good is a pen with no guts?
Because I have a cane, but.
No, I got a different pen for that.
Is that how it came to you?
It was in my bag, I pulled it out to use it, and then, and it was, and then, I don't know.
I don't know.
It'd be so, it'd be so funny to watch Ricky on YouTube. She's got fluid right here, I do think her always. I'm gonna wash those.
You almost kicked your coffee.
Uh, that's empty.
Just went through the other way.
I'll make a motion to see you later.
You're good?
Yep. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
See you later.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.